I'd like to call the Gurnee Village Board Committee of the Whole to order. Roll call, please. Donna?
Hood.
Here.
Loesensen.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
All present.
All right. This is Committee of the Whole, so it's not, no business decisions are made tonight. These are discussion items only. First item for discussion is a rate adjustment to the amusement tax and hotel tax that Patrick summarized, and Pat and Brian are going to take us through a presentation.
Yeah, so I'm going to run you through a quick PowerPoint here that kind of mirrors the memo and the attachments that I provided you earlier. So first off, just kind of some background information as far as why we've been talking about this. As we've talked about when Brian gives us quarterly financial updates, and if you've seen during the past couple fiscal years, sales tax continues to decline with online shopping. That's hit us hard. This current fiscal year, we had 17.5 in the budget for sales tax. We're looking to probably end around 17.15, and next year at this point, we're putting in 16.9. So it's been a while since sales tax has been below $17 million, but we continue to see the decline, like I said, with the online shopping. Along with that, it seems like every time that a developer comes in to meet with us, they're basically looking for what can we do for them for financial assistance. It's been an increasing trend. As you read the newspapers, you see a lot of towns having to deal with this. We've been pretty lucky. We try to structure ours so they're performance-based, so when we do invest in economic development assistance, we want to make sure that we're going to get paid back in a short period of time. It's going to bring people to town, but this is something that has been on the rise. Currently, in our budget, we don't have any available funding to earmark, to set aside for when these opportunities arise. So we usually end up scrambling and either talk to the village board about pulling some money from the reserves, or try to squeak out some surplus in the general fund to cover these. The issue with these is if something comes our way that we find attractive, and we don't have the funding to be able to help out with it, the opportunity could be lost, could end up in another community, and then that's gone forever. So as I said before, the dedicated funding for those opportunities is not available, and then also just the village board's desire, as well as staff, to continue to maintain our current service levels, operate without a property tax, to keep that tax burden on our residents at a minimum, keep our reserves strong, and then take advantage of those opportunities when they arise. So with that being said, with those, the village board priorities there, what that kind of pointed us to was amusement tax and hotel tax, so just some history on both of them. Music tax was originally imposed in 1976. It was a per-admission fee. It's amended multiple times, and then finally, in 1998, it was transitioned to 3% of gross receipts, where it's remained since that time. Got seven entities in town subject to amusement tax. Obviously, the big player in that is Six Flags Great America, but we also have the theater out at the mall and the golf course, courses that contribute to that as well. And as I had there in my last bullet point, it's about $2.3 million annually. Of that, Six Flags is about $2 million of that, 2.3. Hotel tax, went into effect in 1986. It's 5% of the rents charged for renting a hotel room. It's been unchanged since that time. Got 11 entities in town. Generates about $1.3 million annually. That includes Great Wolf Lodge, which we're expecting to come back online here July 1st. So what Steph, after we took a look at this, with that information in mind, what we're recommending is an increase of 1% to both the amusement tax and hotel tax. This would generate about $975,000 based on the estimates we have in the budget and historical information. Of that $975,000, we would recommend to set this money aside for economic development opportunities, earmark no less than 30%. So like we did when we bumped up the home rule sales tax and dedicated that solely to infrastructure improvements, we'd make the same recommendation on this for economic development. So we'd set aside no less than 30% every fiscal year. If somebody showed up, we would have that pot of money to negotiate with, bring that to the village board. Obviously, any of those expenditures would require an agreement, which would require a village board approval. If we had fiscal years where nobody showed up looking for anything, or we didn't come up with any agreements, that money would stay earmarked and would accrue over time. So if you went three fiscal years and the revenues performed as that right now, you'd have about $900,000 sitting in that pot if something came along that was attractive and made sense financially to the village. Since the agreement with Visit Lake County is tied directly to the hotel tax and that rate, any change of the hotel tax rate would impact that amount that we contribute to Visit Lake County. So what Steph came up with here, just out of the gate to consider, is capping the annual contribution by the village based on the current number of hotels and attractions in town at $190,000. Right now, we're at about 175 is our annual contribution based on hotel tax revenue. We picked the 190. It was a little bump for them, about 8%. Ellen and I have been talking. We're going to work with Maureen from Visit Lake County to get her in here in the next month. We'll have her come in and talk about what she does, the services she provides, and how that directly impacts the village. So this 190, I mean, this is really just to start the discussion, what the village board may want to do. If we're in favor of moving forward with these adjustments, we won't take any action probably until March, is try to get Maureen in here before that and have her make a presentation and then ask her questions, and then, you know, if the village board is comfortable with the 190, so be it. If there's a different figure after listening to Maureen and hearing that information, we can make that adjustment kind of on the fly. We did reach out to those entities that are impacted by this. On January 18th, we sent letters and emails directly to those 17, 18 taxpayers informing them of this meeting, asking them to come out. Also gave Six Flags a heads up. They were the first one we gave a heads up to probably a month and a half ago that this was coming. I reached out directly to them, reached out directly to Great Wolf. Didn't hear back from too many taxpayers. There was one email that I included in your packet. That was really the only formal response that we received. The others that we talked to, the big players stated they were going to take a formal position in favor or against it, and we're just going to let the village board discuss it and do what they may do. So that's, then this is the Visit Lake County. That I kind of jumped the gun on here. So right now, we do 22.5% of hotel motel tax revenue goes to Visit Lake County, not including Great Wolf. That was an adjustment we made here within the past year. So about 175,000. This current fiscal year, I laid out the annual average over the last 15 years, about 136,000 each year. We had also worked in, you remember, an additional $280,000 for Visit Lake County through the Great Wolf agreement when we amended that when Great Wolf came onboard, so that'll start here in three years and ramp up over a total of seven years. As you guys know, I mean, we're the biggest contributor to Visit Lake County, but we also have the largest attractions in the county between Gurnee Mills, Six Flags, and Great Wolf. And there's the proposed amendment, as I said, cap at 190, $15,000 increase. If a new hotel came to town or a new major attraction came to town, that would be an opportunity to open that agreement and take a look at that maximum amount, because that would create more marketing opportunity for Maureen and her staff over there. But as presented right now, it would be based on the current climate, number of entities here in Gurnee. And then just to review the timeline, obviously, as I said, sent the notification out, talking about tonight. It's just something that the village board is in favor of. Probably look at a March vote and then have it effective on May 1, so coincide with our fiscal year and give those entities a chance to adjust their financial systems as they may to put this tax into place. So we'll obviously keep them updated. If the discussion tonight looks like moving forward to this is what the village board is leaning to, then we'll get another email out, letter out, to let those entities know what the discussion was tonight, kind of where it's leading to, and then the date of the vote, so they'll be. And then, I don't want to catch anybody blindsided by this as far as those entities that are subject to this tax. So that's kind of.
Yeah, and I just want, and I want to add, our retail corridor is extraordinarily strong. We are at a 98% occupancy, which is almost unheard of in communities in this retail environment. As soon as something's empty, you know, there's demand and there's people looking, but the negotiations take a while, so sometimes you get something that looks like it's been sitting for a few months. It doesn't mean, but we have more demand than we have supply in the retail quarter. It's strong. But with online sales, we're losing ground, and that's very hard to make up. And our demographics have significantly changed in the last 20 years. When we made this decision, we had a lot of new housing. New housing is heads and beds, as I say fondly, and it was younger families, lots of kids. I mean, think of all of us up here, what we're spending now compared to 10 years ago, and that's the whole community. So without new housing, high-density housing, and, you know, most of the people living in town have been here for 20, 25 years, and they don't have the young kids, you know, that's a lot of sales tax that we've lost, or the potential, the disposable income compared to where we were 25 years ago when we made this decision to go without a property tax. So in order to remain without a property tax and try to make up for some of this online sale and the change in our demographics, amusement tax and hotel tax, we've never touched in anybody's tenure up here. It's been a long time, so it made the most sense. A lot of the development that's looking for incentives are not retail, they're entertainment, restaurants, that kind of stuff, which brings people into shops, so those are good things to invest in. But we can't rely on sales tax as the incentive, as we have for the last 20 years. That's been our go-to for incentives. So this creates some opportunities. There's some marketing. There's some things we'd like to do with the visitor-oriented policing to make sure that people feel safe coming here. So this kind of creates some opportunities, plus fills the gap in the general fund that, you know, provides everything, public works, public safety, community development. So it seemed like a good choice. I know I've talked to each of you, much higher level than, not with the detail that Patrick provided tonight, so this is a good opportunity to weigh in, ask questions. I know we have some hotelers, hotel operators here tonight. So I'll make sure they have an opportunity to ask questions, too, if we didn't answer it already. Questions from the trustees? Okay, I'll go, I'll start at trustee Jacobs, and I'll move on down the line.
Sure, a series of questions. So one is, is the state anywhere with internet taxing, to bring that back to the communities? Secondly, are the other cities on Exhibit B considering tax raises on the hotel and retail that we know of, or the hotel and amusement that we know of? And third, have we looked at the hotel tax rates north of the border, because I'm sure some of our visitors may stay north of the border, and we should probably look at it, see what they tax at as well?
I can answer the first one a little bit. There has been a bill in Congress about internet sales tax that has never gotten out of committee. It was being championed for us by Representative Dold, but now with everything that's going on in Washington and other higher priorities, I don't know that they will get to it. There is a, we just found, just, I just got the notice and shared it with Pat and Brian, the Supreme Court is going to take up the case again. Remember, it was the Supreme Court that overturned a decision, and the reason why, the internet doesn't have sales tax. There is a new case, I think the original case was South Dakota, and this is North Dakota or something, but a new state's challenged it. It's worked its way, the Supreme Court, they have agreed to hear it in this session of the Supreme Court. That may give us some relief. And some retailers are collecting sales tax. You see it on some of them. When I've seen it, it doesn't usually include our home rule, which is what we use to, in lieu of a property tax and what we use for capital, but it's just not nearly. So we might get some relief with the Supreme Court when they hear that case, maybe. The other two, I think Patrick's got to.
Sure, so the list of communities there in Exhibit B, if you're a non-home rule community, you're limited to having your hotel tax rate be 5% by the state of Illinois. So a lot of these are non-home rule, so they're maxed down already. I haven't reached out to those that are home rule to see if there's any adjustment. We can do that, the couple on here, and I have not looked to see what the rates are north of the border, but that's something easy that we could gather that information this week and get an email out to the village board and let you know where the Pleasant Prairies and Kenosha's of the world are at, so we'll do that.
The ones that are home rule in here do have a property tax, and that makes all the difference in the world.
Right. And another point, you brought up the state. I know we talked about the internet shopping a lot impacting us by sales tax, but also the state of Illinois, with their 2% administrative fee, and then what they're doing with income tax, too. So we've got the one impact of the internet shopping, and the other being that we're at the mercy of the state of Illinois, and if they decide to, you know, reduce our revenues to help their budget situation out, there's not much we can do about that.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Karen was next.
Yeah, so I was looking a little closer at the list to see if there were any other municipalities that do not have a property tax, and I looked up Schaumburg and their hotel tax. I don't know if I, it's correct. I mean, I just did a Google search. It's presently 8%. So that was something to note. I mean, I know our funding source is limited since we don't have the property tax and not going to implement it, but it kind of makes sense there. So I would think that that would offer some value, though, what trustee Jacobs is saying, also in terms of over the border.
I just wanted to say that at our last board meeting for Visit Lake County, we are going to increase the amount of all of the towns other than ours by 5%. So there was some discussion a couple of years ago, and we wanted to raise it like $5,000, and people got really anxious about that is like 50%, you know, rather so to go it more often in smaller increments was the way that the board decided to go. So hopefully, next year, we'll see. I mean, that's also up to each board then to agree to do it, and it might take a year or two to get it in their budget, but it's going to go up.
That's good. And just for the record, trustee Ross is our representative on the Visit Lake County Board, or a board member and represents us. Greg?
Yeah, I think it makes, you know, because we haven't increased the amusement tax and the hotel tax in 20, 30 years, I think it probably does make sense to take that increase now. However, my concern in alignment with Jacob's question was if we catch up to the other communities at, you know, 5, 6%, then are we still going to be behind if they increase theirs later this year or whatever?
Oh.
I mean, if Schaumburg is already at 8, and if everybody else goes to 7, we're still behind, so we want to take that into consideration before we make that decision. And then, secondly, you know, looking at Visit Lake County, while they do add tremendous value to us as a village and other villages as well, in Lake County, the issue that I have is we're sitting at six times what everybody else is paying, six times. And, you know, whatever value they offer, and we've always had a hard time figuring out, you know, is it worth it or not, but sitting at six times what everybody else is paying, they're getting the same benefit we're getting, yet we continue to increase. Just as an example, since 2013, we've increased, we've increased our share to them by $83,000. That's a lot of money. And, you know, here we are again, considering giving them a cap of 190. So I would suggest that we rethink that one. And then, of course, when Key Lime, not Key Lime Cove, but Great Wolf comes online, they're actually going to get even more money in addition to that. I think we've paid enough. And, you know, and as I said, they're of great value to us. I don't knock them for the work that they're doing. However, I think we've probably reached our limit with Visit Lake County. Somebody else needs to shoulder some of this burden and let us get some of the benefit of what they have to, of what some of the other communities bring to the table, so.
And I think it'll be important for Visit Lake County to demonstrate that if Gurnee's contributing six times more, they're doing six times more for us than they are for others, if that's possible. I did ask Patrick to check to make sure you guys are all on the email distribution list for, I get a lot of stuff weekly from Visit Lake County, so I get a pretty good feel for promotion and what's being done to promote Gurnee and that, so I think it's important you guys start getting the regular stuff.
You know.
Because, you know, just seeing her once a year, you probably don't get a good feel for everything that's going on weekly for us.
Well, I think they do bring value, and I'm glad to have them, you know, they're, you know, what they do is very professional, and when you go online, you see all the stuff that they do. I think that's great. However, you know, we, I think we pay more than our fair share, and the problem is every time we increase it, all the boats float up, you know, all the boats rise, and, you know, but it's at our expense. And I just, you know, just the fact that other communities would balk at an increase, I don't see where we get to balk at an increase. So I just think we've paid, and I think it's enough.
Yeah, one of the things to keep in mind is we, under state statute, cannot have our own Visitors Bureau. It has to be a county-wide, or it's defined by the number of hotel rooms. Cheryl, like, help me out.
Yeah.
There's a reason that prohibits Gurnee from carrying the ball themselves and having a Visitors Bureau.
Well, we could, we could, but then we would receive no money from the state. So right now, our, the percentage that we pay is 9.2% of the total budget for Lake County. And if you add up everything that the rest of Lake County pays, that's 285,000, so that's 15% of what their budget is. And so if you combine all of what the Lake County municipalities pay, that's like 24% of the budget. So then, the state gives, they collect the state tax, and they have a very complicated formula for what actually comes back to us, because that money also goes downstate. And so you can't figure it out because it's such a complicated thing. And then they put restrictions on what you can use the money for, and you have to, it's very difficult to be a Visitors Bureau, because the fiscal year starts July 1st, and you know how the state is. So the first payment that they got was in December, and that was for five or six months. So in the meantime, they have to keep everything going, and then the state requires that they spend all that money by July 1st. So it, you can't carry anything over in reserve, and that's the state rules that they have to follow. So it's not like a business, it's not like a government, like we do. It's not like a business is run. It's kind of a weird.
So there would be no matching money from the state if we chose to go out on our own and have our own Visitors Bureau?
But not only that, then the state requires, when they give the grant, they call it grant money, when they give the grant, then the Visitors Bureau has to match, it used to be 100%, but now it's 50%, which makes it a little easier. So then all of the money from the municipalities and the businesses goes to match, and if we don't match it, then the state takes the money back. So it's really convoluted, and it's, like, say for Restaurant Week, the restaurants that are represented, they pay $350 for that service, but then they are, they have joined the Visitors Bureau for the whole year. And so they're listed in everything that the Visitors Bureau does for the whole year in addition. So it's the state money, it's the municipality's money, and then it's the businesses that pay their share, the ones that want to have visitors come, so the restaurants and the amusements and some regular businesses, too, join. So.
I don't know if that makes you feel better, but the alternatives are not good, so.
No, I'm not contesting that we should have, you know, we want to, I'm not even suggesting we should have our own Visitors Bureau. I mean, like, you know, the Visitors Bureau of Lake County is fine. The issue for me is when, you know, if you, based on the number of hotel rooms, Waukegan has 1,500 hotel rooms, and Gurnee has 1,300, we pay 169,000 and they pay 28,750. It just doesn't make sense.
But it does if you look at the hotels, because if you talk about full-service hotels or room hotels, and so what they get, the income that they get, it, I don't know, we can talk about it later.
Well, I, it just, they're getting the same benefit we get because it's one Visitors Bureau, but we pay six times what everybody else pays. That's the point. That just doesn't work.
But they don't have the, the things to advertise as much, so that's the confusing.
I think getting Maureen in here in the next 30 days before we make a decision on this will be helpful, because those are all questions that she can address directly. Ellen and I have been talking. I know I've talked to multiple people on the board, so we have our list of running questions ready for Maureen, that she should be ready to answer when she comes before you. So that's something I'm going to work on here, getting her scheduled, either the February Committee of the Whole, or maybe if we can get her here, the second meeting in February or something, however long she needs to get prepared. But it would be helpful, as we have this discussion here, looking at this.
Yeah, she may be able to show how much more advertising of Gurnee properties is Don versus Waukegan properties and stuff. But noted, duly noted, Greg. It's for further discussion after, I think, we're with Maureen, and she makes her case for what it should be. Jeanne?
Well, just a couple of things. You know, when we get these requests all the time, it does kind of drive me crazy that none of these are paying a property tax, and if they would evaluate how much they're not paying by a property tax, I think it should send a message to them that they're, and still have all the services that we have for them, should be appreciated. But everybody wants their hand out. I get that. As you know, that bothers me.
I know, and it's the way that your property bill is structured. You see your property bill. You don't, with the 22 taxing bodies that aren't, you don't even notice that the village isn't on there. It doesn't say Village of Gurnee, zero. That would help if we could get them to print Village of Gurnee, zero on their tax bill. That would, because...
Maybe the residents would pay attention to that, too.
I mean, every single coffee, you know, I get somebody who talks about, you know, how much taxes they pay to the village, and I'm like, mm, no.
No, I agree.
You know, all of us, that's been for years. And we, Jack does a great job. Almost everything we write, we include the sentence, you don't pay any property tax to the village, so hopefully people understand that we do rely on the sales tax, hotel tax, amusement tax to provide all the services. So I know, I hear you on that one. It's frustrating.
Yeah, it's very frustrating, and I, you know, any of these solicitors, and we've kind of changed the approach with anything over. That's the only thing, you know, just like the tax sharing that we did with the auto. I don't mind that kind of participation, but out and out giving cash goes against my grain big time. The other thing that, I'm not so sure that I like the money. It's a good idea, but I don't want it solely designated necessarily for economic development. It's a good thing, but the accumulation and having that money out there that's available, I don't know that I, because we have other things that come up in the village that we may need that money, and if we.
Absolutely.
Put that designation on it, I mean, like, when we did it for the road, that's always going to be a problem.
That's by ordinance, yes.
Yeah.
This isn't by ordinance.
Right, and so I want money fine to somewhat, but I don't know I want it completely designated either. I mean, not everybody may agree with me, which is fine. I just.
That would be a budget decision.
Yeah, I mean, we could target.
Whether we accrue it or leave it as a line item.
I mean, you can either, you can do it through the ordinance, if that's the way the village board wants to go. If they want to leave more flexibility, then it's something that we could deal with through the budget process.
Yeah, I'd like a little asterisk.
I mean, it can be one of our, you know, guiding principles for the budget, is try to set something aside, but obviously, subject to other needs and the village board's desires at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, I mean, I bet, I just would like a little bit of flexibility on that.
So you could accrue it into a line item, and then at budget time, we can decide how much of that goes where and how much stays in.
I mean, it's still going to be, it's still going to be in the general fund.
Yeah, we would just budget an expense in the general fund.
Right.
Okay.
So we would know the impact, you know, whether we need it or not before budget approval.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, we would know what the, what the impact of expensing that every year is.
I think it's important, though, that we need to start earmarking some. So whether it's for incentive deals or some, you know, reinvest on, I mean, if we want to spend some more money over on East Grand, or, I mean, whatever, economic development can be a pretty wide spectrum of things, so.
Okay, but.
I understand where you're coming from.
You don't want us to be locked in like we are on infrastructure, a half a percent.
Right, but infrastructure's always there. Economic development.
Yes, that goes there, goes nowhere else. It takes board action to take any of that half a percent. half a percent sales tax. This has a lot of fungibility to it. But it was a good number to start with.
No, and I, I get that part. It's just that.
Okay, yeah, we would keep that in the budget. Tom?
I'd agree with Jeanne as far as not having it in the ordinance. I'd appreciate the flexibility for economic development, even though I think it sends a message when we say it's designated that we're not just taking the money into the coffers and spending it where we want. But I think it's, it's difficult times. So I'd appreciate it not being in the ordinance. Second, I, I think it's important, I think Greg said it, and I know for sure Cheryl would say it, is that VisiLake, VisiLake County is an excellent asset for the Village of Gurnee. I don't think any of us deny that. However, as part of our due diligence, I'd agree with Greg. I think we just really need to take a look at the numbers to see if they make sense. But that in no way should reflect on Maureen or, or staff or what they do for us, just that we owe it to the taxpayers to take a look at it. And just in general, I think our approach with the hotel tax is, amusement tax is a good one in terms of focusing on keeping tax off our residents best we can. That, you know, having our tax in that area doesn't impact our residents to a great deal. So I think it's a good focus for us. So I don't have any disagreement with what's been said so far.
Would any of the hotel operators like to address the board? Have we answered your questions?